First to our team, Ms. Connie Lambert. She is going to be our Bartlett High School School Year Administrative Assistant. We have Alexandria Donnelly. She is also going to be the Bartlett High School Full Year Administrative Assistant. As you know, Ms. Feifield will be entering over to the transferring over to the business office. So that transfer will be happening in a couple of weeks. At the middle school, we have Lakisha Torres, who was hired as an ABA. We have Kaylee Elwood at Park Ave. She is a paraprofessional. And we have a new tech support person here in the district. His name is Robert Truman. We recently had a transfer. We had Webster Middle School, a building float sub, has now taken a permanent position at the high school in the ELA department. And then we've had a couple of resignations. We've had Ellen Windis, who was a BHS math teacher, Rita Lancelot. She is an ELL teacher. And Kelly Warner, who was Webster Middle Webster Middle School Academic Interventionist. We were also recently notified, we are losing a member of our central office team here. Ms. Jill Chaptalane has submitted in her resignation, retirement, I should say. It'll be effective on February 1st, 2024. She is moving on to the next chapter. Her and her husband, her husband is already retired, and they are going to be moving out of state to begin their next chapter in retirement land. So we wish her the best. But she's still busy at work here, working harder than ever, I think, trying to make sure that we are in a good place for whoever enters in as our next curriculum director. And do you have any questions about personnel? No? Next item I have is family and community engagement update. As you know, we, the district, had a team attending the Family and Community Engagement Summer Summit on October 26th at the Best Western in Marlboro. It was hosted by the Mass Department of Education. As a district, we registered a team, and that team must consist of 25% of family members, and those family members cannot be a part of the district employee. Our team was made up of myself, Dr. Patty Mackay, our family liaison from Park Avenue, West Dame de Oliveira, our family liaison from Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School, Ms. Margarita Nieves, our re-engagement specialist Barbara Smolars, our Park Ave for a parent representative, Ms. Erica Rocha, and our Webster Middle School Parent Representative, Shaina Mandela. This was a great opportunity for us to network as a team. And then we were able to break out in smaller sessions as they had groups throughout throughout the hotel of different seminars and stuff, informational sessions that were going on. We were able to network with other districts who have family coordinators and family programs up and running, and, you know, just discussing how they reach out to families and what resources were available to us. I was also able to attend a superintendent's roundtable about best practices and discussions around community connection and ideas about reaching families within our own communities. It was a great opportunity to sit and discuss with our parents and speak about their experiences and how they entered into our district and how they feel their overall outreach was. Did they feel welcomed? I was able to speak with our parents at that time to say, you know, one of them just enrolled in our district a couple of years ago. Did she, what was her experience when she walked in the door? Did she feel welcome? Did she feel welcomed at the school level? How was the whole process? And she, you know, overall, she said it was a very good process. She felt like when she came here to register and she had met with Desiree, she felt very welcomed, knew what she needed to turn in. She had children at both middle school and Park Avenue, and both of our experiences, she said, were wonderful. Both schools welcomed her, the principals welcomed her, they were given tours. So overall, the feedback was very good from our parents internally, which was nice to hear. But we still have a lot of work to do in our district with engaging our parents and getting our family and communities involved within our school systems. So after that summit, what we did is we came back to the district with some ideas. Dr. Mackay and I then followed up with an internal meeting of our family engagement specialists with our principals, our liaisons, and our re-engagement. We talked about how we welcome our new families into the district, what our process is, because really what we're trying to do is streamline. We want the experience to be the same at all schools. We don't want, you know, somebody to have a different experience with, you know, they could be entering into two different schools and have different experiences. So we talked about what that could look like when we're reaching out to our parents, how we're engaging them when they come in. Because as you know, we've recently went to an online enrollment platform, which kind of changes how we're interfacing with our parents right off the bat. So it was a really good opportunity for us to sit, to discuss how we're going to welcome our families in, what roles are our family liaisons going to play in that in that process. So one of the big takeaways that we had through all of this is that many of the districts who have big outreach programs, big family engagement programs, one of the key roles that they have is they have a family engagement coordinator. So they have somebody who spends a bulk of their time or time organizing and planning and make sure we have structures in place, consistency. So, you know, after some discussion with Dr. Mackay and the opportunity of realigning and looking at our job descriptions with the retirement now of our curriculum director, just realigning a couple of things, she is going to be looking to take on that role of family coordinator in addition, which will be great. So then we'll have some central communications that can go out in regards to family engagement and working with the district and that, and helping improve our processes. So we look forward to that work. I think it's important work, and I think it's something that we can and we should be doing a better job at. Are there any questions about family engagement? No? Okay. Moving on to instructional leadership update. As you know, with the district is still supported by our SaaS partners. SaaS is our statewide system of support. Their focus is, one, to help us identify clear priorities anchored in culturally responsive, great appropriate instruction and a sense of belonging. And two, to target support in service of those priorities with a particular focus on supporting our schools and our district ILTs with the adoption and implementation of high-quality instructional materials. Our SaaS partners worked with us this summer in developing our district instructional priorities, and they continue to work with our district leadership team. SaaS has gone through some changes at the state level. They are also reorganizing a little bit. They are now focusing their work more as a district instructional leadership team. So they used to come in and support us as a whole, work with our DLT, and their involvement was targeted towards schools. So now they want to come in, and they're they're changing from a district leadership team to wanting us to create a DILT, a District Instructional Leadership Team. And that team is going to be focused on really working on the work and helping to support our school instructional leadership teams. So we will be having one meeting a month with our SaaS partners, where they will be supporting us in that instructional leadership practice so we can support our schools appropriately in that. So as part of that process and their reorganization, we have, Dr. Sharmee Curry has reached out to us. She is the Associate Commissioner, and she would like to come into our district on December 11th to visit classrooms within our schools. She'll be sitting in at the middle school and the high school and view the progress of our work. And then there'll be some follow-up throughout the school year with the SaaS partners there. Are there any questions about our partnership with SaaS? Right. The district has also been notified that we have been selected. It is lucky for us. We are able to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, so NAEP. This is like full of acronym night. I've tried to spell everything in the document for you because it helps me remember, because you kind of go crazy with acronyms here. The assessment is administered by the National Center for Education Statistics within the U.S. Department of Education. Public schools in Massachusetts are required to participate under the Mass Education Reform Act. Additionally, the Every Student C-ESSA of 2015 states that districts who receive Title I funds are required to participate in all activities in reading and math for these assessments. So basically, we got a letter saying they're going to come in, they're going to assess us between, it's going to happen between January 20th and March 8th. They told us they're going to be assessing in grade four in math and reading. They do the assessments, and we're supposed to be receiving some additional information down the road. So I still haven't got anything else, but I have notified Ms. Puleafico and Dr. Mackay as she is our Title I Coordinator. And so we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that we participate in this assessment. Moving on, we have members of the Glean team and our TNTP partners. That is, and our SaaS partners and our ELL consultant representatives from Park Ave, all conducted learning walks last week in the Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School. They were focusing on three key elements, looking for high-quality texts, higher-order questions and tasks, and student ownership. The walkthroughs are non-evaluative, and they're help, and they're meant to help guide our work and support our literary action plan and our district priority. So once walkthroughs are completed, feedback is compiled, and it will be reviewed with our Glean team next week. And overall, feedback is sent out to the classrooms at a whole, just promoting what we're doing really well and things that we need to work on. But we don't target any individuals. It is non-evaluative. It's about feedback and overall growth. So they had that, and they went very well. Next item I have for you is our, I'd like to announce our John and Abigail Scholarship recipients. We have Cuadrado Ajiman, Ariel Otteri, Peter Lavash, Reese LeBeau, Ryan McCormick, Angel Marine Kessaris, Dylan Poland, and Donovan Williams. So I'd like to congratulate all of our recipients. That's really awesome. That's one of the best things that I get to read of the night. We're really proud of their work, and just congratulations to all of our recipients. Do we have any questions? No? We'll continue on. As you know, part of our work with SaaS is also makes us eligible for grants. So the district did receive the TAG grant, which is our Targeted Assisted Grant, for $50,000. This grant supports Webster Middle School and High School. The grant is going to cover PD for co-teaching and professional development for meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. So I'd just like to give a shout out for Patty Mackay. Dr. Patty Mackay, she's the one who writes the grants and overall manages the grants. There are a lot of work. We receive a lot of grants. So I'd just like to thank her for her efforts on that. I also had the pleasure of attending National Honors Societies last week and this week at the high school and the middle school. It's wonderful events, and it's a great way to see our students shine and so many participants. And I'd just like to wish them all a congratulations. Those are the best kind of events to attend. I also want to give a shout out to our Food Service Director, Kelsey Sanders. She's been working hard to get our Wellness Committee up and running again. She has received 15 staff members who have volunteered their time to participate. The National School Lunch Program requires us to have a local wellness policy in our district. We did have one prior to COVID. Ms. Ellen Nyland had previously got it up, and then it kind of went stagnant for a little bit once we hit into COVID. And so now we're regrouping and putting it back together. So their job is to review our wellness policy, and they'll conduct a needs assessment of our school community in relation to the guidelines for the National School Lunch Program, and they will be updating that policy. So that policy will be coming towards you, to you down the road. I mean, it's a lot of work, and I just want to thank her. We have a lot of dedicated people who have been volunteering their time for the food lunch program and helping with our farm-to-school and our taste tests. So I just appreciate all the excitement around feeding our kids healthy, healthy food. That's great. And then a couple of weeks ago, I informed you that I had sat on a meeting with the state who was looking into chronic absenteeism. Last week, they sent out a notification for us for participations, for interest. And so I did fill out an interest in participation. What they are doing is they are offering $10,000 out to districts. By participating in this initiative, we're continuing to improve family engagement and And in participation with DESI-led webinar focused on strengthening the family-school partnership to better support students. So part of that is implementing a robust tracking and monitoring system for chronically absent students to provide the necessary support and intervention. And I'm happy to say that we have invested this year in open architects, so we are already there. It really pulls in our students. It gives you a whole dashboard. You can easily see what your chronically absent percentages are. You can drill down into that. You can get the days of the week the students are absent. You can go into the student, and it ties into other demographics and scores and things like that. So we have a pretty robust system in place for that now. And then we need to offer a scale, attendance recovery academies, providing a minimum of four instructional hours per day during non-school days, and attend a DESI webinar focused on programming and instructional expectation for these days. So that would include attendance recovery academies, which may include Saturday recovery academies or academies during February and April vacation. So those academies will be required to attend three days or more. So they're still going to be sending out, we haven't received any official notification yet, but we did commit to do that work, because I do believe that's an area we need to work on. Everybody needs to work on that. It's high across the states here in Massachusetts. So it's not just a Webster problem, but it's something that I think is important, that we need to take advantage of and work with our families to improve our attendance. So once that information comes back, I will make sure to bring it to you, and then we will start figuring out with now our out-of-school-time coordinator, Ms. Lois Taylor. She will help us assist in some of that work and planning for what that's going to look like. Any questions on that? No? Am I talking too fast? Just going right through. All right. Next item is the district received notification from the MSBA. As you know, there was some legislation that went through that made adjustments to the districts whose project were approved prior to October 1st. Since our project was approved on March 2nd, 2022, that makes our Bartlett High School project eligible. The actual amount of the award will be determined once the district submits the required budget and protection information and partners with the MSBA to apply will revisit the project funding limit. Some of the feedback that I have gotten to date, and Ms. Kontos and I will be meeting with Mr. McKenna on Monday, but I've spoken with some other districts, is that the concern is that we think it's wonderful that they increased our allotment to, the opportunity to have some additional funding, but that funding is going to go towards the grant initially, which would decrease the local contribution. So it's not, the whole purpose of this was the inflation has increased so much that when we originally went out to our project, which was $101 million, since then, the initial projections were 14%, 17% higher, and they're seeing that across the state. So what we've had to do is continuously value-engineer our project back. Value-engineering means you take a look at what you have, and then you scale back, whether it's not as good quality or alternatives that you look at instead of maybe wainscoting on the wall, it's a painting on the wall. So you're looking at all different things, cost savings, you know, maybe it's the cut of the curb, maybe instead of, you have tar for a curb or concrete instead of having nice marble curbing. So something's got to give, and you look for creative ways while holding true to the instructional environment, because that's the sacred part. That's why we have a new building, is to keep to the instructional environment of the building. So I think the concern is that by doing that, by decreasing the grant amount to make up that additional dollars they're giving us, would require us to go back out to town meeting, which could be a challenge. So we're meeting with Mr. McKenna to make sure we understand that is the feedback that I've gotten from other districts who've gotten some attorney's feedback on it. We're going to confirm with that ourselves and then, you know, discuss as a committee what our strategy will look like moving forward. Because just by reducing our grant doesn't help the project. So there will be more to come on that for sure. It's something that is high on our radar, high on the town's radar, and the 30 other schools' projects that are in the queue right now to get that additional money. Are there any other questions about anything?
Just a clarifying question about what you just shared about the building project. It sounds like what you're describing is the state has acknowledged that inflation is causing these projects to cost more than anticipated, and in response to that, they're providing more money to the towns for those projects, but instead of it going directly to the project, it would go back into the town budget?
So, so what they're providing us is, we received a grant from the state that's covering a big portion of our project. They're increasing that amount, but our approved project is not increasing. So our approved project is still 101, so they're not increasing what was voted on. They're increasing the grant, which will reduce the town contribution, but it doesn't help the project as a whole.
I understand. That's an important distinction, I think, for us here and for those listening.
Right. So that's what we're clarifying, and that's what I've been told to date by multiple sources. So Representative McKenna, who was a part of--
I'm a PM as well.
Yep.
So it sounds like the helpful thing to do would be to give whatever funding above and beyond the originally budgeted cost of the project, which would account for the actual inflation.
Which would allow us to go back and increase what we've had to value-engineer down to prioritize again what we can put back into the project that we've had to take out. But unfortunately, the only way we would be able to do that is to go back to the community and say, listen, the state gave us $7 million, let's just use an estimate, right? $7 million. Can we increase our project funding by $7 million? So we would have to go back to another vote for that to happen. So there's no guarantee there.
I imagine that would be hard for folks to understand, for us coming back and asking, you know, to have those funds allocated to the project?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
And through the chair. So, but maybe it's possible that if there are future projects that we may need the town to help us budget for, like athletic fields, for example, then that could be something that's taken into consideration, not through the grant, but just through the budget process in general.
So that would require a whole different town meeting vote. So in order to get fields or anything like that would be a whole totally separate project that we would have to go back to the town and ask for that vote anyways. Is that what you mean?
I didn't realize it would be another vote necessarily, but yeah.
Yeah. Because what we have in the project is we have, as we've pulled things out, and I'm, now I'm going to confuse myself, but there are certain alternates in. So the project will come in, and we put those alternates in when we go out to bid for certain things that we might want to see. So whether it's fields, athletic fields. So if our project comes in at 101 even, and there's no extra money, we cannot do those fields. Any of those alternates cannot get done. If it comes in at 100, right, and we have maybe an alternate for $500,000, then we would be able to accept the bid with that alternate. So to do fields or anything like that is pretty much going to be, I would say, out with this project now. The only way to do that would to be start all over and have to go out to the town and bid it out as a separate project, if we had that funds. But it would, it would still take a town vote. Yep.
Good question.
Those are very good questions.
Any other questions or comments from the committee about, about this, or is this sort of the end of your--
This is the end. Yep, that concludes my report.
Great. Any other questions for Mrs. Prangeli? No? Well, thank you for your updates.
Thank you so much.
Lots going on.
It sure is. It's busy, but it's all good busy.
The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening. I think that was a good segue into the Building Committee update. So I have some news to share with you on that front. All of the music and athletic or strength training equipment has been moved this past week. It was marquee on the Gore Road campus. You may have noticed, depending on where you came in from, but we have added some additional signs into the campus that were causing some confusion in terms of where to find the visitor parking and being able to delineate the traffic pattern. Hopefully, that's helping people find the spots now. Last night, we did have our planning board meeting, and we were looking to get the full approval from the planning board to move forward. The town engineer gave the update in terms of where we were with outstanding items. All of the items have been addressed. The only item that he brought to the attention of the board was some minor spillage and light spillage over on the Poland Street side. There's some light spillage into the road, but not into the residential areas. We did not get the approval yet last night. We are waiting on the town planner to draft decision for the board to actually, our ability to move forward on the site plan. So we will be going back to the planning board on November 27th. Prangeli and I had an opportunity with the town administrator this morning, as well as the town planner, to follow up, just to make sure that we had everything aligned appropriately and what to expect. So we will be getting a copy of that draft decision to speak for us to be able to provide feedback on. And we will also have the town planner, as well as the building inspector, attend our meeting on Monday, update the full board in terms of where we are and what we are permitted to do or not permitted to do before we have all of the site permit in place. Questions before I move on on that one? I would say that our meeting with the town planner this morning seemed very optimistic that we should not have any issues when we go in front of the board on the 27th. So I'm going to remain hopeful that that's what we experience next time we go in front of them, because it's been a long, rigorous process and many iterations that the architects as well as the chairman has been going through the last couple of months, actually, and several months before I joined. On the bid front, the file, subbid, and general contractors, we actually extended those submission dates for both of those categories by two days. That was based on questions that we were receiving and the addendums that we sent out. So we really wanted to extend it just by two days to ensure that we would not omit anybody from potentially bidding and that we would get good quality bids when those were extended by two days without any impact. We did get in all of the file subbids. On those file subbids, the good news is, is all of them came in, and when we went with the lowest bidder and looked at that, we came in with budgets that super. No, it was under by $14,700. So awesome news for that, so that's really great. Some additional activities went on in prep for this. Of course, in one of the addendums, we issued out our contract for this, and we did consult with Patrini and Associates who have advised us in the past. Construction is scheduled to start on 11/27. Have a school building meeting on Monday, and we're also actually having one on Thursday night. We've got some questions regarding the bid process. So before the general contractor bids are due on Friday, we wanted to get the Building Committee together to do the items. Can you just pause there and see if there's any questions?
Through the chair. I just wanted to make note that on this, this list, right, the number of bids says zero next to elevators, so--
I can address that.
Thank you. So I just wanted to let the rest of the committee know what that means.
That's typical on a lot of the bids, and what happens on it is the general contractor takes responsibility for that. There is no subcontractor. That's a good call out. Thanks for asking. On to some maintenance updates. So at Bartlett, let's start. I did report at the last meeting that we were having a submission boiler. We did have it serviced. We had suspected that two nipples on the boiler were affected. We replaced one of those. When one of them was replaced, we discovered that there was a barrel. That barrel cannot be bonded or welded. So, as you may know or may not know, the boiler itself is part of this building project. We plan to be replaced in Phase 1, a little later in phase 1. So we're now looking at alternatives and exploring what are the alternatives that we can use at the time. Backup boiler that we have is a much smaller boiler, and that boiler, if we hit temperatures in the 20s, will be insufficient welding. And that boiler, if we hit temperatures in the 20s, will be insufficient welding. So right now, we are exploring the alternatives for us, which will include a variety of things, which will cut off the heat section seats. No construction will be going on in that section. Would we want to go with a sort of temporary rent boiler option in the interim? So we are working, our service provider, on some alternatives, working also with our OPM as well. But very unfortunate news, not news that I want to deliver to anyone. I think all had hoped that the boiler could fit beyond phase one because that was one of the critical items that really up me. Pause on that one. Just that, perhaps formulate some questions that we have.
Got a sweater, Mohammed?
Certainly not news we wanted to hear, but I don't think it's a surprise to any of the committee members that that boiler has failed. I mean-
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, we knew we've been holding on for a thread and we were, we thought we were going to make it. We were in the home stretch and unfortunately, just fell short.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be some type of a creative plan that will keep students warm in the interim and, you know, phase one is starting soon, so.
Let's hope for warmer weather to prevail for now. All right. Webster Middle School. We have replaced the roof on the garage, so that's been taken care of. Had the DPW come in, help us move the storage containers that we have, but unfortunately, their trucks aren't wide enough, not stable, so we're looking at other alternatives to get those moved. At Park Ave, the water heater sensors have been repaired and we're currently exploring options. There are a couple of the shades in the library, as well in the cafeteria, that are not functioning properly. So those are the highlights when it comes to me across all three. Any questions?
Thank you for your updates. Any questions from the committee? No? Okay. Well, once again, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the principal report, and joining us this evening is Ms. Heidi Peterson from Webster Middle School. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. So I want to start this evening with some very exciting news and a guest, well, a couple of guests. You all know that you approved a policy to have therapy animals in the schools, and we are lucky to have Ms. Jen Keery, who's one of our counselors, who has a trained therapy dog. And I'd like to turn the mic over to Ms. Keery to introduce Lane.
Hi, everybody. I have Lane here. He is a three-year-old shepherd hound mix. He's from Aruba. He's been a trained therapy animal for about a year now, and he took his first visit into the middle school last week, and the kids just lit up and really enjoyed him and have been asking me every day when he's coming back. So he'll be doing classroom visits in the classroom. He'll be incorporated in a variety of lessons with the students. He'll be able to do groups with the students and meet with students individually. He really is more effective, the job that a counselor can do with a student in helping co-regulate, an animal like Lane can do that in a very small, short amount of time. He really lights up a room. So we're excited to do work at the middle school. Thank you.
Lane's resting right now. Do you have any questions for Ms. Keery?
I'm sure he's exhausted from all those pets before the meeting started. Any questions from the committee? I just want to thank you for making him a part of our community at Webster Middle School. I know the students are really excited to have him there, so looking forward to updates along the way, how things are going.
We have a lot going on at the middle school, so I, one of the things we have going on is one of our paras in the fifth grade has been working with the classrooms and they've had created pen pals at a senior center. I, sorry, I can't tell you what town because I really don't, I don't remember. So they've been working on pen pals back and forth, and we're working at this point to set up a meeting so the pen pals can meet at some time in the near future, probably in March. And so they're very excited about that. So it's a nice community and writing assignment. I know that Mohammed also has on his piece here about the high school visit, so I don't want to say too much about that, but the eighth graders have visited both Bay Path and the high school pathways programs. So they're getting to see what their choices are as they are thinking about high school. And then we have a predicament, that is a good predicament, that we're working with Ms. Kontos on, is that we have so many after-school activities at this point that a couple of weeks ago, we had too many kids to take the late bus and we had to have the bus company send a second bus. So it was a new thing for us, and it was very exciting. And we've got, at this point, 14 clubs going on. Most of those are new to us, started by students themselves. They have an interest and they come to us and express what they want to do. They're asked to go out and see if they can find an advisor. If they can't, I put it out to staff and most, we usually have a staff member just pick it up immediately. So some of our new clubs are, we're going to be starting a jewelry-making club, which was a hit during our summer program. And what they're going to do with the jewelry is then put it into our PBIS store so that the students can then purchase with their Wildcat PBIS tickets. So kind of like a business model, too. So we are starting a meme club. The soccer coach has started a soccer club so that they're continuing working on their skills and offering that to students that weren't on the soccer team as well to build that. The cross-country coaches have started running clubs, so they're doing the same thing, meeting every Wednesday to just go for a run, again, open to anybody. And so those are some of our, Pokemon Club was started by students, and Dungeons and Dragons, and then a volleyball club. So really, the volleyball club is student-run, the adults just there to monitor. We have an eighth-grade student that just sets everything up, kind of definitely runs the show, keeps the kids in line. It's really great. So those are some of our things, including our athletics. So we're really, I've always said that, and some of you know this, that the key to being a middle school student is really getting involved in your middle school community. That's where we build their interests and they can try out different things. They don't have to commit to one thing. They can do one thing one week, another thing another week. Many of our clubs are, come in, you don't have to sign up, just come in. So it's great for them to experience all of those and meet new friends and find the interests that they have in common. In addition, last night, Mrs. De Corsi has been working on building our Special Olympics team. And so the Special Olympics started a new club, new club team, Bachi Ball. And so there were three schools, three local schools, that took on this new program. So the Special Olympics is hoping to build this bigger. But we went to Tantascua Junior High last night and they competed in the tournament, and it was very exciting for all of them, and they got their ribbons. And so the next thing that they're going to be working on is basketball. So we're going to get a unified basketball team together and looking forward to that. So let's see, what else we have? We also have our family event coming up on Sunday. We're doing a family bowling afternoon. We made sure that the, it was a Patriots bye week, not that it matters for you Patriots fans at this point anyway, but that will be from 4:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. And it's a sign up, it was sold out like within seconds. So we will be having future, more things that the counseling team will be working with Ms. Neves to plan for more family events, so. And then, of course, I know that last, last time you had school committee, Mr. Collins talked about the MAPFRE visit regarding the high school, but just a little bit about the middle school. We had MAPFRE sponsor a Safety Quest bus, and so our fifth graders got to participate in going in and doing virtual games and activities, learning about fire safety, traffic safety, bicycle safety, home safety. And then we also had our MAPFRE-sponsored sports, the Real Madrid teams, basketball and soccer. So all of those teams, the high school came over to, with our kids, and they did drills and activities in the gym. And then we got group pictures and asked questions. And then the adults got to sit down with Her Royal Highness and the representatives from MAPFRE and have some conversations about what these programs mean to our students and what other things that MAPFRE could assist us with. So I didn't watch this video yet because it just got sent this afternoon, but Ms. Perangeli has a video that MAPFRE put together about the event.
Yuma's Medical Center, as well as Fundación Mafre, we both share the same goal of preventing injuries, traumatic injuries amongst children. And the way we are presenting the kids with this notion of injury prevention is through games.
I think the best way for us to prevent those kind of injuries is to inoculate the kids with the education that might make them make better choices and just be aware of how dangerous some of these activities are.
I think it's a really wonderful opportunity for our kids to be engaged through the game playing process. That's something that they've grown up with and they know, to know when they go out to the community, when they're at their home, that they can say, hey, I experienced this at school today. We were playing this video game where I learned about these safety things. We shouldn't really be doing that, or we should address this. It gives them a really provoked thought for the students.
It's always a spark for me when the kids are able to tell me what they're learning because it shows that they are paying attention and gaining knowledge from their experience.
So we look forward to our continued work with MAPFRE. And then finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about a new system that we're using at the middle school. We have a new electronic pass system that we implemented, started yesterday, really got going today. The students were trained on it yesterday and then today. So it's called, it used to be called E-Hall Pass, and now it's just called Pass, and it's by the system called Securly, S-E-C-U-R-L-Y. And so basically, it's really nothing new other than, I mean, kids had to have a pass to go into, out of the classroom anytime anyway. Now it's just electronic instead of a paper pass that they walk around with or a pass that they leave on the bathroom sink and germs and contaminated. So it kind of eliminates all of that. But it also allows us, staff members, to track data and to track students as well. So if you remember, the last couple of years, we've had some issues specifically in seventh and eighth grade bathrooms where we've had to start a policy where only one student was allowed out at a time. This will eliminate that because what we can do is we limit how many passes are out in the building, which we can adjust as we're kind of getting used to this. But so, for example, at this point, one student per hall is allowed to get a drink at a time. We have 20 passes that are allowed to be out in the building. We can simply override things if there's an emergency. We can block students from going to certain areas. So for example, if we were to have a medical emergency and needed to have an ambulance in a hallway, we would shut down the passes in that hallway so that nobody could leave the classroom. So it allows us to track who's going to see the counselors. It allows us to see who's coming to the office. It allows us to track who's kind of meeting up and leaving at the same time all the time. It will give us great data when a parent comes in and says, you know, why is my student missing this, this, and this? And we can say, because your student is out at the bathroom every 20 minutes. So it allows us to do a lot of different things. So it has been working well in the last two days, trying to get some kinks out in terms of, you know, just numbers and making sure we're having enough passes out at the same time. And I know for me, it probably took me longer to write the pass today than the student could have gone back and forth five times by the time I got my pass written out. But now I know how to do it, so. Because when you do the training, I'm a person who has to do it. When you sit and watch something and you're like, yeah, 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 but when you actually do it, then you process it. So I can entertain questions about that if you'd like.
Sounds like a great opportunity to gain data. And also, it enables us to have, to not be as restrictive as it felt last year, right? Did we just start this two days ago? I wasn't clear on that, or was this something that was already happening?
Yes, we just started it yesterday.
Okay. All right.
So we trained the staff at faculty meeting last week and then the students yesterday and put it into full force today.
Mm-hmm. Great. Looking forward to seeing how that, how that data looks, you know? Good deal. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mellett?
I love the idea of all these clubs coming back, but through past experience, I have something to think about. What happened with busing? They don't do their normal route when they do after-school busing. And that became an issue because some students actually didn't know where they were or how to get home sometimes, where they were dropped off. So it's just something to think about, to check on how and where those students are being dropped off because it's different than the regular bus route.
Yeah, Ms. Mellett, that's a good point. And, you know, it's quite a leap, fourth grade, you know, there's an adult waiting for their student at the bus stop. And then fifth grade, you know, to your point, the late bus doesn't drive you to the door. It doesn't drive you to that typical bus stop. So great to see the clubs, I agree. But yeah, I think we don't think about middle school kids as not knowing where they live, but I think all too often, especially the lower grades, they get on the bus, they're not real sure where they're headed.
You would be surprised at how many middle school students do not know their address or phone numbers. It's shocking, quite frankly, if there were an emergency. So parents out there, teach your students where they live.
And we do late buses. They all get passes to go with an address, so the driver should know where they're getting off. We do have our routes posted and parents are informed that there's generic stops because we do get those calls occasionally, where are they? And then we do assess, depending on where the kids are going, where we're seeing a lot of activity, if we have time to add another stop or we need to make a stop that's closer. We always adjust if we need to. So we are aware of those situations. Knock on wood, we haven't, let's knock on wood, all of us, please, keep some good mojo going. But we are aware of that, and we do work with the bus company, and the school is great about giving bus passes out in the office for those who are eligible for bus passes. I also wanted to thank Heidi Peterson, and I want to thank you, Jen, for bringing Lane in and for being creative and offering so many opportunities for our kids. It is so wonderful to see activities and the involvement starting to happen. It is so wonderful to see activities and the involvement starting to happen again in different ways to reach our students. And I appreciate the creativity and the willingness to do that and think outside the box. So I appreciate that. And I know that it's gonna, we're gonna keep growing and more involvement and more outreach. And if we have to get more buses, we'll get more buses. We'll figure it out.
That's great. Yeah, yeah, I agree. And also for all the, all the faculty advisors that are giving their time as well to support these clubs too. So all around, great work.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I just want to also point out that all, because of the way the teacher's contract is, they're supposed to have a club for two years before they get financially paid for their, their time. So a lot of this time is voluntary. Fortunately, at this time, some of them are getting funded. We're able to fund through ESER, but once ESER goes away, they won't be funded. So, so some, like I said, that, that is something that they, they do.
That's a great point. Yeah. Thank you. Any other updates or any other questions for Ms. Peterson? No? Well, thank you for your updates. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohammed.
Thanks.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Good. So there's a lot of things happening for students in Bartlett. Like there was a visit from the middle school. There was financial aid night for seniors. And then there was also an MIA, MIAA students that went on a trip as well. I always mess that up. I don't know why. And then, okay, so let's start with the trip. So the MIAA students went on a field trip to the Gillette Stadium for a leadership conference. It was like a sports leadership conference. A lot of other schools were there. It sounded like it was fun. I asked a lot of people, they said it was really fun. And that happened on Thursday, November 7. And then the student council members are going, are gonna go on a field trip to Tantasclo. They're having a conference meeting. It's this Thursday. I'm so excited to go on it. Really fun. It's gonna be after school at like 7:40. We're gonna come back out at like 7:45. It starts at 2:00. And then financial aid night, it was really helpful. I loved it. Kevin M. Fudge was the speaker. He was very wonderful. He really connected with all the audience members and like remembered all their names. It was really fun. I loved that. And now the middle school visit, it was so much fun. There was, we, we showed them what the innovation pathways, the new innovation pathways that we have in Bartlett. And it just showed like what, there's more options than just like learning like English, math, and stuff like that, and showing like what they can do in the future. And like showing that Bartlett is a really good school to go to. And I loved it. I love meeting all the kids.
I, I do want to give you guys a shout out, the students, because they did a wonderful job. We had many student leaders throughout the buildings. There were sessions that were done throughout with student leaders at each session, modeling what the kids are supposed to be doing, modeling blood draws, working with some of the remote controls, having the kids do items. So I want to give a shout out to the high school students. You were wonderful, good role models. And the middle school students were great. They were engaged in the work and it seemed exciting about it. So thank you for that, Mohammed.
Oh my God, it was so much fun. I loved it. Like I was in the business innovation pathway area, so like when they came, we just like, they gave them like a marketing plan. And then they had to draw, draw their own like club that can happen in school. And it was really fun. Like I, when, when they drew like a club, I was like, oh, that's in Bartlett. You can come there. I was just like telling them, like, you can come, we're here. It's really fun. And then, so that lastly, the sports, sports are ending, fall sports are ending. I just wanted to say good job to all the players and I'm really proud to this, all the students and the coaches for a great season. And on the other hand, winter sports are starting and all the students are really excited about it. So yeah, that's all my updates. Question?
Thanks for those updates, Mohammed. Sounds like a lot going on.
Yeah, it's really fun.
Good deal. Any questions or comments from the committee? Well, once again, thank you for sharing all the good stuff that's going on over at Bartlett.
Oh, no problem. It was fun. I loved it.
Great. And the next item on the agenda under old business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. As a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. They're approved at the building level. Ms. Prangeli?
Did you want me to look through these? So I can read, the first one is PDIS. It's Ryan Renad. They're doing a PAM night, high school, not old.
Tomorrow?
That's what I thought.
Oh, on here it says the 15th on the application. Maybe they had to move it? Okay.
I think that's incorrect. I believe it's the 20th. So I was.
Cool. Okay.
And then we have Ms. Borden. First.
Great. Thanks for sharing those. Looking forward to find out who, is it, they're getting turked, maybe? The, the other one? Yeah. Great.
I believe the teacher will be dressing up as a turkey as part of their.
Yeah.
So not sure who this is gonna be, but.
Mohammed, you'll have to let us know next time.
They usually show up to the.
Pepper alley?
Pepper alley.
Perfect. Good deal. All right, great. And let's see here, the next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of surplus items miscellaneous books from Webster Middle School Library.
In your packet, you have a list of books that were surplus items that we, they're out, but you know we did libraries.
Any questions or comments from the committee about these surplus items? It's a lot. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to declare surplus items of miscellaneous books from Webster Middle School Library and to direct the superintendent or the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Master General Law 31B.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And thank you to each of you who donated, whether anonymously or, or with your name attached. Much appreciated. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2023 School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding.
In your packet, you have a copy.
In your packet, you have a copy of the memorandum of understanding. This is done annually between the school district and the Webster Police Department. I'm catching up on this. I didn't realize it was an annual item to be done. So I reached out to Mr. Shaw. We reviewed what was done in the past, the updated memorandum, to make it current, and we are looking for school committee's approval on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2023 School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number nine, yes.
Number nine, yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Yep. In your packet is a copy of the new job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We have taken this opportunity to look at it and adjust, as I stated earlier in the evening. Some of the items that are new to this job description is the mentoring program, which is typically run by Dr. Patty Mackay under the Title I. Really belongs under the curriculum director as, you know, a new mentoring coming in, providing the professional development and acclimating them to the district. So that will come over into this role. They were all in agreement with that. So if you could approve this job description, then we will be posting the position as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number nine, yes.
Number nine, yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Yep. In your packet is a copy of the new job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We have taken this opportunity to look at it and adjust, as I stated earlier in the evening. Some of the items that are new to this job description is the mentoring program, which is typically run by Dr. Patty Mackay under the Title I. Really belongs under the curriculum director as, you know, a new mentoring coming in, providing the professional development and acclimating them to the district. So that will come over into this role. They were all in agreement with that. So if you could approve this job description, then we will be posting the position as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number nine, yes.
Number nine, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is a discussion and approval of the superintendent 2023 to 2024 goals.
Thank you. So in your packet, you have two items. The first item that I put in was the superintendent and district administrator rubric. And then I put in a copy of this, my goals for the year. And in my goals, I've referenced what category in the rubric that I would, what standard I was hitting and the number and letter of the standards for your reference and back and forth. So I'll just give you a high level. I'll go through, under the first one was an under instructional leadership. It's standard 1F. The district leadership team, using multiple sources of data gathered in FY23 as well, as well as other data points, identify opportunities for improvement and providing support to all teachers in district instructional priority and develop an action plan to address these areas. So this is as a district leadership team. This is a group goal. We are doing this together to really work towards our instructional priority in the district. Below is just a couple, a copy of our district priority, so I put that in there for your reference. We are looking to have analysis of data, which will give us insight into the needs of our students and staff to create equitable opportunities for achievement of all students. And then you'll see, hopefully you can follow along in the pattern that I set it. For me, it was just easier to lay it out across, so I know where I'm starting and how it's gonna be ended and how I'm gonna measure that goal. So I will continue on to the second one. And if you have any questions or thoughts on these and you want to give feedback as we're going through, please stop me. I'm just gonna give a high-level overview of these. The second one is to oversee the Bartlett High School renovation, ensuring a fiscally responsible project. That's the sports, the district educational vision through the design and construction phases while preparing for instructional use of newly renovated school. The third is develop and implement a budget in collaboration with the business manager, district leadership, leadership team, which focuses on our district priorities. And then you can follow that along to see how the impact, what activities will support it and how it will be measured. Family and community engagement, standard three, A1 and A2. Development and implement systems and strategies to engage family as partners within our school systems and the community at large. This is an important one for me. They're all important, but this one means a lot to me. I really think this is an area that the school district has struggled with for many years. I think we need to get creative about how we're addressing family engagement. But it's not just family engagement. It's not just what happens between eight and two. It happens, we've got to get the community involved. We've got to get out to the community and we've got to find different ways of doing that. So, you know, if that means going out to the community, meeting people where we're at, we've got to do that. We've got to build that relationship from the minute they walk into the door, from the minute they pick up the phone, to, to when they go home at night and how we can provide those resources. So looking at that as a whole, not just, this is not just saying we're gonna have more events because that's not the answer. The answer is, what are the events that we're having? How meaningful are they? How can we collaborate to bring more into that event? And then what can we do to bring events out and, and work with our community partners to reach more people? That's what we want to do. And then the last is under professional culture, develop an ongoing professional development plan to ensure and continuum of meaningful, meaningful professional development in the areas to support our instructional strategies. A big goal of ours this year is how are we supporting our teachers? How are we supporting the work that they're doing in the classrooms? Our goal for this year was to simplify, take a step back and focus, focus on what's going on in the classroom by supporting our teachers with their instructional strategies, focusing on our, on our multilanguage learners and our students with disabilities. If we're doing that, then everybody's gonna grow. So having a meaningful professional development plan to get us there, and that is something that I think if you ask, we do a wonderful job with professional development, but it's that continuum. It's that follow-up. It's not that last-minute thought and changing from here to there, well, I think we should do this, or last-minute plans, we didn't think of that, maybe we want to add that. It should flow throughout the year. How are we supporting the teachers? And the teachers should understand what, what support is there for them. How are we supporting them meet this goal? So that's what we're trying to do. I know I've been working with our curriculum director in doing that. You know, we've got the format laid out and we're starting to work on December and March and those extended plans that'll get us through the year. So a teacher knows it's clear on what instructional strategies and what support they're gonna get from us as a district. So if you have any thoughts or concerns or feedback, I'm certainly happy to hear that. There's a lot going on and hopefully this format works for you all. And if not, just let me know. I'm, I'm here to listen.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee about these goals? I mean, certainly you've, you've touched upon some of the really important initiatives that we have going on here, whether it be the instructional leadership piece and the data collection, the family and community engagement. I would agree that that's something that's critically important. The Bartlett High School renovation project, it's gonna be a very time-consuming part of both of your lives for a couple of years to come here. And certainly some, some stretch goals here, I think, but, but all attainable.
Yep.
You know, so.
I think so. And I'm really happy that we are focusing on data and really working towards that. We're putting systems in place. And, you know, we've talked a lot about it over the past few years, but we really haven't modeled it. We have a leadership, as a leadership team, haven't really even dug into the data to look at it and then set action plans for that data. What does that mean once we dig in and set action plans? So that's becoming a regular practice for our meetings. We are working ways to do that. We are meeting as a leadership team. We have three leaderships teams, meetings a month, but we have ours. So our second and our fourth is our district leadership team. The third meeting of the month, we have in the afternoon, which is our full. So that includes our deans and instructional, our assistant principals and our principals. Those meetings, we're looking at equity work and we're looking at data. So those are focused strictly on that. So when we come in, we identify some areas of need. We're going through some practices. And then what are the outcomes? What do we expect? And what are our action steps? We're walking away with action steps that require results. So that way, it's not just talking about it and then forgetting about it. It's forced and scheduled. So it's, it's that repetitive work that needs to become part of our everyday practice. If we're asking the schools to do this work, we should be doing this work. We should be modeling this work. So I think it, it feels like good work and the team is all in on it and they've been productive. So we're gonna be looking at attendance this week.
Great.
Yep.
Well, thank you for all of the time that's spent on, on the goal-setting process. Certainly, I think it's laid out in a way that is easy to sort of follow and including the standards is also very helpful for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One more. One more chance. Any questions or comments from Mrs. Prangeli? No?
And please feel free to reach out at any point for feedback. I'm happy to hear it. And, you know, we're always learning. So anytime that you have something to offer, please feel free to share. I'm happy to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you for your openness, too.
Thank you.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the school year 2023 to 2024.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.